And adjourn for right now and move, well, excuse me, we want to go down to the discussion of the regular meeting agenda. Everything is on consent except for one case, PBL common separation fence. And is there anything that we need to bring off of consent agenda to put down there? Okay.
Here, can I make a comment on the calendar?
Yes.
So item 14 is a fence modification. We do have a fence modification, item 12, that's on consent. If no one is in objection or feels the need, we need to keep item 14 off consent. Maybe we can move that one. I'm sorry, if I'm not going to consent.
I asked that question in our weekly meeting and there seems to be some administrative reason why we can't have that one put up there and they can explain it in their presentation.
All right.
Because I had the same request. I've learned from you, put everything on the consent agenda we can, so we speed up the meeting. So I've learned from the best on that, so I asked a question. So we'll just keep it the same unless, and does anybody have any cases that they need to refuse themselves from and abstain? Okay.
Actually, I, Chair, item 12.
Item 12, okay. When it comes up, we'll just make a separate motion for that one. Okay. All right, now we'll post, we'll adjourn for the time being and we'll take a break. We'll be back here at, we'll take a five-minute break and be back at 10 after and have a regular meeting. Thanks. Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Town Planning Commission. And first item is to have a pledge of allegiance. Would you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Munt?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Blaser?
Here.
Vice Chairman Simon?
Here.
Chairman Bluefield?
Here.
Okay. Vice Chair, do we have approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town but not on the agenda. The Commissioner Board responses limited to respond to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented on or asking the matter to be put on future agenda. Is there anyone who has an item that needs to, that is not on the agenda that needs to bring up and speak to it? Would you open it up?
Yes, one moment and I'll open up the, I will now unmute the lines. Please state your name if you wish to speak. Does anybody wish to speak?
Okay, doesn't sound like I have anybody. All right. We have a public hearing consent calendar. Items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The Commissioner Board made by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, a person requests items to be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the Commissioner Board shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for a purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The items on the consent calendar, item number 10, 11, 12, and 13, which are cases DR 20-87, PBL, DR 20-138, Bill Roxanne and Phase Two, FM 20-03, a cereal valve separation fence, and DR 20-117, banner gateway medical advancement renovation. Item number 12 will need to be, we'll have to have two motions on this because we have a conflict on item number 12. Vice Chair, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve items 10, 11, 13, and 14. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, 10, 11, 13.
Okay. Okay, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve, actually, Commissioner Anderson is saying this one?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve item 12 on the consent agenda.
Okay, okay. Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed. Okay. Cruise through the agenda. Item number 14 is PBL Gilbert Commons Separation Fence. And this comes before us and being presented by Keith because there's just an interesting administrative condition on this one that we'll need to hear about. Keith, take away.
Commissioner Bluefield, there's the commission. Can you see my screen and hear me?
Yes and yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Just have to confirm that. So, the case for you tonight is for a fence separation fence modification at Gilbert Commons Shopping Center. I'll show you the location here. Whoops, hold on. Messed something up. There you go. So the site is located in the Gilbert Commons Shopping Center. The whole thing, outlet is pretty big. This is not a part of the phase that is being modified with design review case, but the PBL Commons project is over here out in red. And the requests for you tonight are basically five things that I want to cover and show some graphics so you can kind of understand the request of the separation fence modification. So the first one is to allow a separation wall to be constructed within the required 17-foot, 10-inch perimeter landscape area. And I'm going to show you a map in just a second that will show you where the fence, what type of fence is located where, where that landscape area is and where the property line is, but I just wanted to go through these real quick. And then the second request is to allow a six-foot, one-inch tall fence where eight feet tall is required, which is eight foot required adjacent to non-residential district or use, which next door to the site, it lies industrial zoning. The third request is filed for that six-foot-tall view fence for the top three foot centimeter of it to be a view fence or a wrought iron fence versus a solid wall. The fourth request is to allow for a three-foot, six-inch view fence instead of an eight-foot solid wall along the SRP portion, in front of SRP wall that on west of the property. I'll show you exactly where that is and we'll go over that. That SRP substation next door had 10-foot tall solid wall. We didn't land a canyon there, so we thought it was appropriate to have a view fence. And so it happened. The fifth request tonight is for no fencing along northern portion of this, with this retention basin. So I know there's five requests and I'm going to try and articulate those a little better and show you this map. So the request for no wall, this red line, so let me pick up. This whole yellow area is the retention basin that exists out of the site today in existing condition. I'm going to show some photos, well, actually, I might just jump the photo really quick. So here is the portion of the, this retention basin next to the SRP substation and this is a tent wall next to the substation. And then here's the retention basin. This is what it looked like today. The rest of the retention basin opens up as soon as the pass or clears the wall of this substation and it opens up to be a much wider basin. And I'll show a better picture. So here's kind of what it looks like when it opened up and this is kind of when it curves. It kind of looks like a little buring, one that goes to north. And you can see the slope of the retention basin here. This is in existing condition. This basin was struck in the early 2000s and retained regional drainage for the jobs Gilbert Commons Shopping Center and about three or four lots located in the Fuller Industrial Park. And then here's another portion of the basin. So basically, the fence is proposed on property line along western down, I'm going back to the map, is actually pretty close to the SRP substation. And then once it goes further north, the property line for Gilbert Commons is literally almost right in the middle of that retention basin that I showed you. So some of these deviations, example for no wall in this location where it's red, is appropriate because we don't want a wall in the middle of a retention basin that will cause all kinds of drainage and retention problems. Green line here is where they're proposing to install the, or construct the partial view fence with three foot of CMU on the bottom, I mean, sorry, excuse me, two and a half foot of CMU on the bottom and three and a half foot wrought iron on top. That's the green line. And that's right in the middle, kind of basically in the middle of the existing retention basin that's out there today. And then the yellow line is a three-foot, six-inch view fence mainly in front of SRP substation with a 10-foot wall. So the reason they're requesting this, these deviations as well, is because they're proposing to install part to parking along that western boundary. I'm going to show you a site plan that kind of illustrates that. So basically, the basin, the edges of the basin come to out where the end of these parking stalls are and that's where the slopes end today. So basically, and you can see down here at the bottom of your screen is a new design of the basin. So we're essentially filling in a portion of existing basin and modifying the slopes to accommodate the parking stalls. And you can see at the bottom of your screen, the parking canopy and the parking stalls. What they're proposing to do is create a tier effect. This, the, this separation fence access retain wall, and this is where it's two and a half feet of CMU from grade on bottom and three and a half feet wrought iron on the top. This whole area here, I hope you can see my arrow, is the, can you guys see my arrow or I need to throw on a little red highlighter?
Did you throw on the red highlighter?
Okay, let me try and throw on the red highlighter here. Laser pens, sorry about that. So this whole area here from property line all the way over to this proposed fence is the landscape setback that was approved by council at 17 feet and inches. So you can see how they're proposing to install their proposed wall barely within that landscape area, which is typically not allowed for the code. But in a situation within this retention basin in existing condition, town staff feel that is a reasonable request. So the slopes of these basins do not meet town, the LEC requirements. They're required to be a 4-1 slope, which the applicant is not, cannot meet that with this quest. Again, another retaining wall here, the lower portion of the slope. And they also don't meet the LEC requirement for the depth of the basin, which they're proposing the basin be, I believe, about seven feet deep. And that is measured from the grade of the parking stall, adjacent to the parking stalls. So as you can see, they're proposing five of these modifications. And I know the reason I showed you that area with all those lines is because it's a large read on this landscape plan to show you all of different fences where they're going to be located. So I wanted to point out that due to the fact that the applicant is not due to this existing condition and the LEC requirement that they cannot meet, they, the applicant is, we just figured this out a few weeks ago, as this is a very fluid situation, didn't have the final design until probably about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Been working on this with the applicant for a very long time and we recently determined that they need in order to, they have to, variances from the land development code for the depth of the basin, which is two and a half feet requirement, and also the slopes of the new, the new base that they're modifying. So typically, those things, those processes would happen prior to coming for you for separation fence modification and a design review application. But as I stated, in this extraordinary circumstance, we didn't know what the final design of the basin was going to be, the final design of these slopes until very recently. So that is why this kind of after-effect type of situation, where they're going to be submitting these variance application after your consideration of the fence modification and design view case. We do have a condition in the staff port that states that they have to submit these variances and that if they do not receive the approval of the variances from the hearing officer, they will be required to modify their site to comply with the land development code its entirety. So that is basically the request in a nutshell. And, oh, I forgot to show here down at the bottom. I know so many moving parts to this and I appreciate patience as I go through everything. The best section down here is the portion in front of the SRP substation. They do meet the depth and the slope in front of the SRP substation, but they do not in this area here, which is north of the substation. So they will have to get a variance from LEC and they will also have a second variance they have to get, is a technical variance from the engineering standards. So they're going to be submitting those two variance applications at the same time and can review them concurrently and they will consider it concurrently, one by the Public Works Department and one by the zone hearing officer, which is the land development code variances. I hope that is clear. I know that that could be a little confusing. If there are any more questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. I just wanted to go back to presentation here. So basically, town staff, we are recommending approval. We do feel that they meet all of the findings of fact and we recommend your approval tonight of the variance given the extraordinary circumstances and the existing condition of the basin that has been placed for many years. Town staff feels this is good design and we've, like I said, we've worked with the applicant for a while on this and we have come up with a half medium we feel for this design and town staff is agreeable to the design. And so we would recommend your approval tonight. Recommend approval of these two conditions. So if you have questions, I will answer them. We also have Tom Condit on the line as well and he can answer any technical engineering comments. Because I know a few of you have drainage questions about what they're going to be doing with the stormwater that's going to be displaced, which we'll be, which Tom can talk more a little bit about that. And then also, I believe the applicant will probably have, pretend they have a presentation as well, that's Ralph Yu. So, any questions?
No, thank you, Keith. So essentially, we've got a deviation, we've got a couple deviations with this fence separation fence, and that's, and two of them require variances in hearing, zoning, hearing, zoning officer?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. So that we choose a technical variance for engineering requirements, the engineering designing guidelines, design standards, and then a, and then variance from the land development code for the depth of the basin and the slope of that basin area they're modifying.
Okay. All right, commissioners, do you have any questions or staff at this point? Commissioner Munt?
Thank you. Keith, so when you say that the, related to the stormwater drainage, you know, given that you don't have the slopes and the depth, now the, I believe it was to be, what I remember as print pool, you'd have to have a certain amount of standing water that would allow to percolate through unless it has some other course. And given volume change, you know, I don't know of an underground storage of some kind or, you know, any other kind of diversion work, but I assume that's something you guys had looked at. And can you speak at all to the design tendencies of, you know, when we look at this, it makes sense, but yet I don't, I don't have a good idea what the scale of alterations would be if they were to have to try to meet that code? And I just think that might provide a clearer picture of why this makes sense to understand those implications.
Yes, Chairman Bluefield, Commissioner Munt, I can speak very generally on that. All I can tell, and Tom Condit can speak more in detail on that, but general gist of it is, is they are proposing to relocate or replace the retention volume from these areas that are the slopes that are going to be modified. They're going to channel that drainage in these underground tent tanks you can see on the screen in front of you. And I believe Tom has reviewed the drainage report, but I will let him speak more on that he would like to. But that's just it in a nutshell. They will provide underground retention to replace the volume that will be, retention area will be modified. So Tom, if you'd like to speak more in detail, that would be fantastic.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Commissioner Munt and Plan Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak on this. One of the things, Keith and I have looked at this a little bit, many of the others have, looking at this over the past week and a half, two weeks. They've submitted a drainage report as well as a grading and drainage plan to help me to understand better what the implication of this change are. The existing basin in that area holds about 260,000 cubic feet of water and the change that's remaining will reduce that by about just under 30,000 cubic feet. They are proposing to place that retention in the underground tanks that you see on the northwest cornering site. And so the other change, right now the basin depth is three feet. They're requesting three and a quarter feet of bonding depth. That's something new that I wasn't anticipating, but I found that during my review and we'll be talking with them about that as we go further. But the bottom line is this, this doesn't look like something they're able to handle and would be approvalable through a technical variance type of a process.
Okay, thank you. So do you have any other questions that they want to, specifically for Tom right now, we have it online, but if there's any other questions for staff? Done? Okay, thank you. Thank you to Tom for that input. Would the applicant like to address this? We'll open the public hearing on this one.
Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. Ralph Yu here this evening on behalf of PBL, in a two-year odd seating here tonight and we're delighted to be in front of you. Simple answer to where we are on this is we agree with staff recommendation, we agree with staff conditions. And just to calm your minds about it, if they're all disquieted, these issues occur because this retention basin is, was built in the early 2000s, I can't remember exactly when. And what we join here is an SRP substation with a 10-foot block wall and half of the retention basin that we can't disturb is technically owned by a defunct corporation that has not been business or existence for years. So what you see in front of you tonight was a massive effort with our engineers and the town staff and their patience in the process to design wall the way it is to accommodate five very unusual circumstances in this, what used to be the backside of the Gilbert Commons Shopping Center. And now it will become a much more pleasing parking lot and landscape area for the tenants and residents of the Gilbert Commons multifamily project by PBL. So we urge your approval. We will file the application for technical variance immediately and therefore we are excited during this project fruition. I'm happy to answer any other technical questions you have, but we are in agreement with everything.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for Mr. Pu? Nope? Okay. I don't think anybody has any questions for anyone. We can close the public hearing. We can bring to the dais and have a discussion or a motion. Whoever pleases the commissioners, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
We should probably open up the phone lines again to make sure nobody wanted to speak.
Certainly, you're right. Thank you.
Will we be unmuting the phone lines? Please state your name if you wish to speak. There's nobody on the line.
And Chairman, when we do make the motion, if we clearly state the conditions and then, you know, the conditions of the pool, so if we're making motion using the conditions in the staff report, just clearly stating that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Sir Commissioner, who fills the prima qualit to make this technical motion?
I look at mine over there.
Make a stab at it. Mr. Simmons?
You and me?
I'll go for it.
All right. Commissioner Munt, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of item, agenda item 14, FM 20-02, PBL Gilbert Commons Separation Fence contingent of. Nancy, do I have to read them specifically or can I say?
No, I can see like the conditions one and two on the page nine of the staff report.
Contingent of items one and two on page nine of the staff report.
Okay. We have a second by Commissioner sign, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Complete with that, we have some administrative items. Plan Commission meeting minutes for November 4th, legislature.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes written.
Okay, motion is there second?
Second.
The second from Commissioner David Blazer. Thank you. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay.
Commissioner Blazer, all in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Okay. I don't have anything to report on about current events, but thank you for serving all of you and taking time out of your schedules to be, to go through this stuff reports and to be current on all the cases coming before us. We really do appreciate your effort and that regard. I need services manager. Did I miss hearing from?
You did.
Oh, I did. I am so sorry. Commissioner September.
Councilman September.
I'll be Councilman, Councilman September.
Thank you, Chairman. I must not be a very good liaison to be forgotten like that.
I'm just terrible reader.
No, no, I appreciate that. So, thank you very much. I don't really have anything to report except to say I hope everybody had a fantastic Thanksgiving with the family and friends. It was a long year. I think we all deserved some quiet time, despite downtime. So it's December 2nd, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you enjoy the holidays coming up and you can have more productive downtime with each other and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for missing that part of the agenda. I'll look to my vice chair for correcting me next time. Give me, give me a line again, so. All right. I need services manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one short announcement before we get back to Sidney Bell's work session item. I would like to congratulate Sidney Bell. She's now Sidney Bell AICP. She has passed the American Institute of Certified Betterment.
Well done, Sidney. Okay, well, thank you. With that being done, we can adjourn the public hearing and we'll go back to the study session. And item number five, being heard by Sidney.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. So the project for tonight is actually three sets of standard plans, all for one developing called Walters and North Phase One. So we will be looking at all three of those tonight. This project is located at Acadio and Valvista. So as you can see, you guys previously saw Keith's study session directly south of this was Waterston Central. So this is Waterston North. It was approved by council, the BAD was in the beginning of this year, and then you saw the preliminary plat for the back in June. So as I previously stated, there are three separate standard plans for this application. They will all be included within the subdivision on the first phase of planned subdivision. It will range from SS 7 to SFB for the plant types and it will range in the amount of lots for each. I've listed on here for your reference just to get a general understanding of what each type of standard plan is going to look like. As you can see, the SS 2011 is the only one that has one stories. This is the largest, the SS 7 moving down to ST 20-12, which is an SFB6 project. It'll have two-story and then ST 20-13 is an SFD product that will be a two-story as well. There will be three elevation tapes for all three standard plans and they are the same. They are ranch, desert modern, farmhouse. Each one has four different color palettes that will be available for the different standard plans. So this is just to provide a little bit more orientation for you where they will be located. The items that are highlighted are going to be Phase One of the development, which will include Phase One of the standard plans, which will be 130 lots. Will be Phase Two of these exact same standard plans, which is not highlighted, request that infrastructure review be identified by APK, but will be in the same general facility vicinity as you see with the east side with the standard plans. There are 485 lots in a subdivision and 270 year plan for the specific three sets of standard plans. Tonight, I request input from the commission, the first being overall elevation feedback, specifically inside and rear elevations, all three standard plans. The ranch style elevation, specifically looking for feedback on that style, colors and materials, and also approving the standard plans administratively. Items that do not require public noticing may be approved administratively by staff subject to approval by the plant commission. The final plat for this project is actually under review with our building vision. So I showed you here an outline of it. There are three parcels included with the final plat. Phase Two includes the other three chunks of parcels, which will have different standard plans. I'm going to go through the elevation picture quickly for all three standard plans. The first one here, the ST 20-11 is that S7 products. This is going to be the largest homes and the largest lots for the three standard plans. As you can see, the first three products are single story, so these are the single stories in the vision with other two plans being two stories. I would like to point out the ranch style at the top here. So this was one of the biggest focal points during the first review with staff of incorporating more elements that were encompassing the ranch style, also being the elevations up to a additional standard for Gilbert, so just adding another material such as stone or brick that's seen in the other two plans and also providing the architectural elements that are indicative of the ranch style. And as I stated previously, we are looking for comments on the side and rear elevations. Staff provided general comment in the first review. Gilbert expects 360-degree architecture on our standard plans. Would like some incorporating elements from the front saws that are indicative of the designs to be incorporated on the side and rear elevations. So in general, we just like some additional elements such as shutters or wrapping the stone, wrapping the wood siding to be incorporated to the sides and rears to provide that distinction. Moving to the second standard plan, this one is going to be the SFB6 product. This is going to be the second largest in the subdivision. As we move on, you'll see specifically the ranch style, the two-story is a, can serve ours as, ranch styles are typically one-story, but we have seen them in the two stories. It's especially important that we try and incorporate some of those features to make it distinguishable in there. So I'll also show you the side and the rear elevations. And then this is the smallest product, SFD product. And similar to Keith's Waterston Central, these are an oversized lot for SFD, so traditionally three thousand square feet. This one had a modification in 4,000, so they are a little larger of products for SFD, which is good to see. So again, staff has similar comments. We understand, especially with smaller product, that it is more difficult to get those defined features, but we think that the applicant has done a phenomenal job on specifically desert modern elevations while bringing some very distinctive elements onto their even such a small street view. And again, the same comment with the side and the rear. So the colors and materials for each, each type of elevation style, and they are using the same color palette for all three standard plans. During first review, staff just requested to provide a little bit more contrasting colors, specifically in the base colors. As you can see, there's some deviations in the different accent colors. They even have like an orange on here that goes on like the doors, but we'd just like to see a little bit more distinction throughout the community to provide some variation. And with the ranch, you can see on like the desert modern, the farmhouse, there is not additional stone or brick that is added. So that was something that was requested that be added to the ranch style, as is in the desert modern farmhouse. I know I just went through a lot of information very quickly. I also just wanted to touch on Chair Bloomfield's comment from the previous presentation study session. In reviewing these standard plans, I did have very similar deviations and modifications as the Waterston Central. We have not run into any issues so far with them. They did request those deviations with a specific product in mind and Mary can maybe be able to speak more on that, but based off these modifications, they are probably keeping mind of specific products. When laying them on the streets, we have not had any issues in our review with those layouts. I just think to keep in mind is how large these developments are and the diversity of colors and products within these areas since they will be developing quite a large section of the town in a very quick period. So just to make sure that we have some diversity in the area. But with that, I am available for questions and I have a request to input there for you.
Thanks, Cindy. And I appreciate that, the foul addressing of the comment from the earlier case and appreciate that as well. That insights very helpful as we're, as we're being asked to consider that in a new case. So, and I also appreciate your comment, your warning of, hey, this is a very big section. If it all looks the same, then it will all look the same for quite some time and maybe we should try to get a little variation. So with that being fresh in our minds, are there any comments, questions that we had, any input that we could offer, Cindy, and guard these standard plans? Commissioner Blazer?
Thank you. I guess I share staff concerns and I would fully support some more variation on the side and back elevations, I think is what you're looking for and additional fishes add some variation on the ranch style. Yeah, I support it. I support the staff's comments and concerns too.
Anybody? Anybody else? Commissioner Sam?
Yeah, so I would encourage, I feel like definitely needs to be some additional variations with regard to the color palette. And the one concern I probably have is with regards to the ranch and farmhouse, I don't, I feel like those terms are being very loosely used with regard to the front of those. I feel like typically we see large patios or porches. I don't see that at all in these. And so I'd probably like to see if they incorporate that in somehow and potentially extending the back patios maybe a little bit. That could be the back piece that that just looked real bland to me, be able to dress that up a little bit. Other than that, I mean, it is a very large swath. I do feel like we need to probably break this up somehow and maybe it'll come a second phase.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, so for me, I mean, I am familiar with the Waterston project. I was there on the south, Waterston South, and I was very pleasantly pleased with how that's gone. And those elevations, obviously, they're different. And me, I guess when I look at this, it seems plain. It needs something more. It feels like we're just running the gun and throwing up houses. It needs something that's going to last. And so I fully support staff in going back here and, you know, kind of spreading these out a little bit further, making them a little more distinctive. So that would just be my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Architect one away on this?
I think everybody's hitting the point, so.
Okay.
I don't have anything new to add.
Very good. Okay. Cindy, do you have enough?
That's perfect. Thank you much.
You're welcome. All right. I think that takes care of everything on the agenda. Is that correct? Okay. Appreciate everybody's time and wish you all Merry Christmas and hope you have enjoyed time and we'll see you back. Oh, one thing I didn't forget to mention though is that we did have an election and we will have a new boss come January and mayor, correct? And she was here attending with us tonight, so.
Yes. Chris Peterson just left.
Yeah, she left.
Chairman, you did mention that you might have more comments on Keith's after hearing Cindy's. I did want to remind you that, and she did.
I, right. I did say that, but with Cindy's input, everything was looking out okay and I think. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Can I ask one question, just a clarification? So I know that we had, part of the request on that item was to reduce the front setbacks, tweak a couple of the side setbacks, but then it still sees 20 foot rear setbacks. So, you know, I read in the report how it's about putting more of the lot space in the backyard, then I don't really see it come through. So to me, it's like we're just squeezing houses on smaller lots. But I guess what is that made up for when we're approving a small, a sure setback off the front and on sides, but I don't see that in the rear. I don't know if Keith is still online or not, but.
Sounds like we're going back to item number, item number four. No, I think that's fair because I left it open to that and I'd get a text mid-break from Brennan asking, so is there going to be more comments? I said, yes, there may be. I expect them to be positive for the most part, just because the product looked good. Anyway.
And Keith Newman is available.
Keith, could we bring you back on?
Yeah. Chairman Bloomfield, members of the commission, yeah, that's a good question. I would, I don't know if Brendan Ray is available to speak to that or actually can't to the study session, if you guys want him to, but, but as far as that's concerned, there, I believe, as far as that's concerned, I believe the open space, they're kind of considering a lot of that in those backyard to provide larger areas for people to be able to play, kind of be in their backyards. And the deeper backyard provides more of an opportunity to, for families to have swimming pools, things like that in backyard. And so that, that's kind of why they're proposing, I believe, a deeper, deeper lot. So lot size will actually be probably a little bit bigger. It's just that they're skinning them up slightly.